Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming into our -- I hope you could find a seat in our council chambers here. So I appreciate all the attendance. Today is Tuesday, December 20th. This is a Prescott City Council study session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. Item A.
Follow-up discussion and consideration of this city council's strategic plan for 2023.
Welcome, Mr. Erins. I'm glad to hear you made it up the hill successfully. No turned-over trucks on the way. That was helpful. Although, as I was telling the mayor when I walked in -- oh, I guess for the record, Barry Erins, legislative consultant for the city of Prescott. I think there is a company that manufactures traffic lights that has a sweetheart deal with Prescott Valley and Prescott. Every hundred feet, there's a traffic light, and they're all set to turn red when I get there. Looking around, I apparently am not the draw that I was hoping I would be, but, you know, what can we do? Let me set a couple of stages for you in the discussion today. The one that we're going to have a discussion on first is goal number one, which is maintain stable general fund. I want to remind you that the paradigm we've been using for our strategic planning has been that the council is responsible for goals and objectives, and the staff is responsible for strategies and tactics. And what we had talked about, Mr. Goodman and Mr. Lamar and I talked yesterday and decided that what we'd like to do is spend some time after this meeting and massage the strategies, and then present the complete plan back to the council for adoption sometime in the next 45 to 60 days, if that meets with your approval. But I think that will be the most effective way to do it. That's frankly how we've done it in the past, and it has been very, very successful. So that's issue number one. Doesn't mean you can't obviously make suggestions. That's your prerogative as mentors to the council. Secondly, I know there's been some interest in reviewing and updating the vision and mission statement. I think it's always good to review the vision and mission statement. I think today we'd like to get in a little bit more meat and potatoes, and I think at a subsequent meeting, whether it's short term or if we can do a half-year look at the end of the spring or the summer, we can go into that also. But I think we had geared up to do the two major goals that we have left on our agenda, and then we've got kind of in the queue to look at the vision and mission. And I appreciate the council members who have indicated that that's something they'd like to look at without mentioning Councilwoman Rusing's name. Let me also tell you that as we're discussing quality of life, I think it also is important for you to voice your opinions and concerns on public safety, even though that's not part of maintaining a stable general fund. Obviously, on the expenditure side, I think, what is it, 70-something percent, Michael? Is that about right? Goes to public safety?
Most of that.
They're looking at each other with worries.
Mark and then it's about 70.
That's probably about 69. Rounding up, about 70%. And that's fairly consistent among most.
Barry, I'm sorry to cut you off.
I apologize.
I need you to speak directly into the microphone, please.
I'm so sorry. Thank you very much, Sarah. I think it is consistent with what occurs in most other communities. As you know, I represent Scottsdale, and I think our figure is 71 to 72% on public safety, so it's relatively consistent. So if you want to talk about the expenditure pressures that you have to deal with with regard to public safety and maybe a couple of other quality of life, that would certainly be relevant for our conversation about the general fund. Thirdly, just as a reminder, there are only three revenue methods that exist currently. You've got taxes on accumulated wealth, and that's income taxes, which cities do not levy, and ad valorem taxes on property, which you have the authority to levy. And then, of course, you've got your basic consumption taxes, which is narrowed down to sales tax and use tax and occasionally luxury taxes, if those are separated out by the government. And then lastly, you've got the miscellaneous taxes and fees that you have as revenue producers. Sometimes governmental agencies, especially at the political subdivision level, find that the public is more accepting of fees, user fees or regulatory fees, because it has the sense of the person who's using it is going to pay for it. The person who is being regulated is going to pay for their regulation, and you may have disagreements philosophically about that, but that's the other area. So if I can, unless anybody, Mr. Mayor, has any opening comments that they want to make, we can just dive right into the goals and objectives for goal number one. Please proceed. All right. Thank you, sir. Goal number one is maintain a stable general fund. I'd like to drop down to goal number four, to objective number four first. You were successful in retiring the PSPRS unfunded liability based on the fiscal year 1718 actuarial. We adopted, if you'll remember at that time, a 0.75% supplemental sales tax, which was designed and limited in the ballot proposition to no more than 10 years. I believe we have achieved that in five years, if my numbers are correct, and now that that has been retired. My recommendation to you is that we remove objective number four, because we have accomplished that objective. And I have to tell you, this is demonstrable of how a strategic plan should work. You come up with an objective, and you implement the objective, and then you can remove the objective once you have accomplished its success. So I congratulate you on that. I congratulate the city on having retired that debt, and I know it was not an easy decision. Councilman Sishka was part of those discussions back then. I don't believe any other member of the council was there when we adopted that, and it was pretty controversial at the time. But it proves that things can be controversial, and, you know, the public can have a good, solid, strong debate about things, and you can adopt something, and it can succeed. And more so in this case, it succeeded in half the time you wanted. Now, there's another important factor to put in your back pocket with regard to this, and that is that because you have retired that 0.75, it means that you have capacity that the consumers were used to. Doesn't mean you have to enact it for something else. I don't advocate that. I don't disagree with that. That's a decision you have to make. But it also means that your aggregate sales tax now is 0.75 lower, which means if exigencies declare for it, you have the capability of up to 0.75, because you have demonstrated that if you do it, especially for capital projects, that if you do it for a limited period of time, your word is good. Did it, left time, it's gone now. So I would recommend that you do that. Unless any questions about that particular objective, we can move on. Continue supporting the market compensation plan. I don't know, Michael, did you want to set the table?
No, I think council's been fairly aggressive with understanding that in order to compete in the marketplace right now, you have to continue to pay people. In fact, they proactively adjusted for inflation halfway through this year, which was not planned, but they understand that the inflationary adjustment was necessary.
And I think that makes a lot of sense, with inflation hovering in Arizona somewhere between 9 and 11%, and it's remained fairly steady. It hasn't gone up, but it hasn't really gone down remarkably, so I think that was probably a good decision. Any comments or discuss -- by the way, I didn't ask for a cost of living increase in my fee. Barry, I have a comment about the market compensation plan. Please.
I think it's great, but one of the things we run into is as we go up, our competition goes up, and it's just this ever non-ending game of how far up can you all go?
What is the answer to all that? Any other comments before I give my opinion? I mean, it's funny, I was listening to a sports talk show on my way up here, kind of my escape for the day, and they were talking about the new college football coaches and how those have gone up remarkably. I mean, if you look at the coach at Penn State, trying to remember the other couple, Texas A&amp;M, and they were given 10-year contracts at remarkable $90 million, which was unheard of just five years ago. And of course, the buyouts are so big, even with very wealthy boosters and so on, they can't do it. I think that's the name of the market these days, that inflation has done that. Now, there are techniques that can be used, and maybe you would like to chat about this, that when you have vacancies or when you have changes, that you certainly can, as other communities have done, go back down to the starting level, and therefore you're not saying, well, you know, this person is making, just to pull a number out of the air, $60,000 a year. They started at 50, they went to 55, now they're at 60, and they leave. Now you say, all right, well, the salary range is 50 to 70. We're going to start you at 50 or 52 or 52.5. I think those are qualitative decisions you have to make. My suggestion is that continuing on a market compensation plan is probably a good idea. How you do that, how you maneuver it, massage it, is up to you. Are there any other comments on the market compensation plan or on that particular concern, which I know a lot of cities have? Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to providing adequate and stable funding and flexibility to maintain a balanced budget as required by the city charter. And I really would like to throw that open to you all and see if there are any concerns about how we have managed that particular objective. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Barry, my question isn't really about how we've maintained that, but I guess in light of our last strategic planning session, making sure that we're set up to continue to do that with some of the sizable objectives that are in front of us that we identified at the last meeting. And I guess I'd like you to speak to that maybe a little bit more.
One other thing, thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Mr. Mayor, I would suggest to you that one of the things in the strategies that the staff will likely do is put in some strategies with regard to cost sharings. If you remember at the last meeting, I could fumble through my notes, we talked extensively about the Dell's Park project, and one of the things we came back with was that we had a collective of federal dollars, we had a collective of county dollars, and both were set amounts, which was good. It wasn't a guessing game. I think the county said they'd do 40% of what the total was. Did I remember that correctly?
That sounds about right.
All right? And the federal government had said they would kick in, if I remember correctly, $5 million without looking at my notes. So there, you're already up to a certain amount, and then Prescott, Prescott Valley, and the state would then share the balance of that, and I think that's how we operate on. I think that looking for aggressively shared revenue opportunities, especially with a lot of that federal money still kind of hanging out there, and the governor's office, I don't care whether we're talking about Governor Ducey for the next 11 days or Governor Hobbs for the next four years afterwards, still have control of a lot of federal funds that lay unallocated at the time. Now, there are certainly criterion on those, and you've got to meet those criterion, but I think whenever you have the opportunity to look for shared revenues, I hope I'm answering your question, Councilman Montoya. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so to follow up.
That's one area.
Yeah, that one area, I guess, and I think we have some good strategic partners, both, I would say regionally with the county in Prescott Valley and the state. But I guess moving back to the other objective that we kind of discussed at the last strategic planning session, do you see additional opportunities for potential federal funds on a state level regarding, say, the airport acquisition, you know, land acquisition program we talked about?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Protem, the answer is yes. There's always opportunities out there. What you need is someone who knows how to mine those opportunities. I don't know what the exact figures are. They talk in terms of billions that are still floating around the state. You have a Commerce Authority that certainly has money sitting that is for economic development. Now, I know we're digressing a little bit, but direct to answer your question about the airport land acquisition, if some of that land acquisition can be utilized by economic development opportunities. To give you an analogy, Governor Ducey about a week or two ago announced the desalinization. I believe the word is desalinization. I've heard seen it as desalination. I don't know which is correct, but anyway, the desalination or desalinization plant. And the company that is looking for WIFA, the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority, to provide some support and some cost opportunities for the water that they will mine from that desalinization plant, what you found is that that's one of those things where, hey, we're willing to put, if I remember correctly, it's $4 billion into the construction of it, if you will provide us with the opportunity on a long-term basis to recoup that money through economic development. And I think the city probably can create those opportunities. Hypothetically, if the Acme Corporation decided that they wanted to put some type of a facility on the airport property, but it require that the city obtain that property in exchange for a long-term lease, and then in exchange for that, that company provides a certain amount of taxable income, then what you've done is you've leveraged the ability for them to provide economic development tax income in exchange for getting money from, whether it's, you know, the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority or the Arizona Commerce Authority or perhaps some other fund that might be out there that could be used. So I think that's a very good opportunity for you. And I think, again, as we look at specifics, that's something that I would commend to the staff to look at specific opportunities in their strategy section. But that's a great example. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments about that?
Well, Barry, I just think that the political environment here is so kind of unknown. We've got large amounts of federal financing dollars that are kind of in the bank accounts, but they've been unallocated. We're going to have a totally new state administration going into effect, what their priorities are going to be. We can only speculate, and we've got very, very narrow partisan majority-minorities in both the Senate and the House. So trying to make any type of reasonable projection on how funding is going to be available, I think, is a real crapshoot right now.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest, therefore, that we approach those things on a project-by-project level. To use the example I used last time in another discussion, and again, I represent Embry-Riddle, as we looked at that, and we worked with Ms. Boda, and we worked with the council, and you worked with Embry-Riddle and so on, we said, okay, we need some money to expand that flight line. Then Embry-Riddle said, we'll match it if the state will match us, because that is a state-benefited regional airport. It is the Prescott Regional Airport for sure, but there are people who to advantage themselves of that airport from all over, greater Yavapai County and maybe even extended beyond that. And so we went to the legislature, and the legislature said, all right, we will give you a matching amount, I think it was $600,000, if Embry-Riddle will come up with. And they didn't say Embry-Riddle. I mean, you actually went to bid on that recently, and Embry-Riddle, turns out, won that bid. I mean, it was a little bit of a crapshoot for us, too, but the fact of the matter is that was a project-by-project basis. I think if you come up with projects that can demonstrate clearly the economic value of it to the city and therefore the county and the state, and can demonstrate that there is revenue potential from creating this opportunity, I think those things can go. I would tell you one other thing. I agree with your comment about the partisan divide. My observation of the legislature now is that the Republican members have gone further to the right, the Democrat members have gone further to the left, which means the chasm of the partisan divide is big on many issues, but not on all issues. And I think there are a lot of economic development issues where you can bring those two sides together on a common basis, and I don't have any specific example now, but that's why I say it augurs for the staff really mining for economic development opportunities and then using those as specific -- I think the Dell's Park is a perfect example of that. If we went to the legislature, and we did, we did, Councilwoman Rusing knows that, because she was with me for, it seems like, weeks at a time, you know, going office to office, which was great, because it sensitized people to the importance of the -- but you will remember when I talked to President Fan about that, and she said, you can't just come in and ask us to fund a whole park. It's not going to happen, because we can't get the votes for it. On the other hand, now we come back and say, ah, but we found shared revenues for it, where the county's going to pay 40%, feds are going to pay $5 million, Prescott, Prescott Valley are in agreement that they want to pay their remaining fair share of that. Will the state match that? And all of a sudden, it's, wow, that's not a bad idea. And you go through the process, and I did receive information that Representative Elect Bliss is perhaps interested in being the sponsor of the bill. I have yet to talk to her, but I did get an email from her. Someone in the audience was talking to her about it. I'm not going to mention any names. And if we can do that, then all of a sudden, you've got a bill. If the bill goes through most of the process, then it's something that can go into the budget, and we can be successful. Great example, specific project, shared revenues, opportunities. It provides economic development. We can show how much money it could potentially bring in, and now we are positioned. Can't guarantee we're going to get it from the state, but at least we're positioned to make our best possible case. If that helps to identify -- I don't disagree with what you said. I mean, the partisan divide is going to affect us. I told people, I really can't read the personality of this incoming legislature yet, but we'll get there. They'll reach there.
We'll just need to have some periodic updates from you.
Absolutely.
To see how the legislature is progressing in these areas, so that we can get a better idea of how best to present those studies and justifications for state funding.
Absolutely so. I agree with that 100%. And as I've told you, I'm happy to come up to Prescott anytime you want to summon me, because I really enjoy coming up here. Anything else on the adequate and stable funding and flexibility that anybody would like to comment on before we move on to the next objective? Okay, the next objective is an ongoing one, and that is to monitor the city's PSPRS unfunded liability status to ensure that past issues don't occur. Just to set the table again, you know, there's good news and bad news in down economic times. Obviously, the bad news is inflation. The good news is interest rates are going up. I don't remember what the actual number is at the present time, but there have been five increases by the Fed in the prime rate, and that has been between a quarter of a percent and 3/4 of a percent. So the interest rate, Fed-set interest rate is probably somewhere up around 4% plus. That means that the potential investment for PSPRS is going to enable them to probably hit higher revenue levels, which means it's going to -- now, that goes into the monitor portion of that objective. You know, working with PSPRS, keeping in touch with them to make sure that they understand that this is an important thing with regard to the revenue that PSPRS is going to be obtaining from their investments, number one. Number two, I believe tier three has now gone into effect completely. Now, you do have people left on the rolls in both the fire department and police department who were not tier three, but now everybody who's coming in new and through normal attrition, whether there's retirements, whether there's people moving to other communities and so on, you now have a tier three that will likely protect you a little bit better as you move forward. So that's kind of the table on that, and I would yield to the members of the council to comment on where we are in PSPRS.
Have you heard whether PSPRS is going to release their unfunded liability list by account? Normally, we'd have it by now, through the fiscal year of June 30.
2022, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, I just talked to PSPRS, and that they're meeting tomorrow. Microphone. I don't want to sit here and do that. She's the last person to watch that.
Just talked to PSPRS, and at their meeting tomorrow, the board will officially release those individual things, so we should have them Thursday or Friday this week.
Well, let's hope it's a Christmas present.
Yeah.
I'm cautiously optimistic that those numbers will be better than they have been in the past, but again, what those numbers are can then be folded into what the staff comes up with strategies on how they're going to monitor the going-forward unfunded liability. Other comments about that? Are we too close to Christmas to be talking this seriously about this stuff? All right, then let's move on. We've removed objective number four. Objective number five, we probably want to spend some time on, and that is monitoring legislative, state, executive, and other political subdivision actions. Let's just briefly go through the strategies. That'll kind of help set the table. Seeking adjustment to impact fees, that is a nuclear war, as Mayor Good and I both know, because we have made our efforts to try to get that. That is not something that in a new legislative session with 50% being brand-new, that's not a fight you probably want to undertake. Nevertheless, I think staff will decide to maintain that in the strategies, but it becomes more of a long-term strategy than a short-term strategy. Secondly, is maintain the city's ability to manage its revenues and expense at the lower level. I'll give you two examples of things we're going to have to be really, really careful about. Candidate Carrie Lake had said that her, one of her proposals was going to be to eliminate the residential rental tax and eliminate the food tax. Do we have a food tax? Do we have a 1% here? And, you know, I was around in 1980 when we put the food sales tax on the ballot, and we repealed it for the state, and we retained local option. And the reason that we retained local option was because we understood at that time that the pressures of public safety meant that you had to have opportunities to raise funds in order to maintain public safety at the level that you think is important to protect the citizens of your community. Now, unfortunately, President, you know, Carrie Lake's gone. Well, not completely. Depends on what judges say in the next couple of days, but President Peterson has announced he's going to adopt that. He wants to do away with the residential rental tax, and the purpose that he says is it'll help the housing shortage. Those of us who lobby for municipalities will tell you that that is a false premise, because the percentage you're talking about, I mean, talk about the food tax. If your sales tax on food is 1%, on a $100 basket of food, it's a dollar. Now, granted, every dollar goes a long way, but the fact of the matter is the damage you do to the city's revenue portion on that lost dollar when multiplied out by the number of people who buy food, like, similar to the residential rental tax, is it really a reduction in rents? Obviously, a contract is signed, and that's passed on. If you move that, you don't have to pay it. But the next person that comes in to rent will probably see an increase that's commensurate with what that residential rental tax is. That's just reality. And I know they gnash their teeth and say that I'm insensitive to the poor starving developers in the state, but the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, again, it's kind of a fool's gold errand, because, yeah, you can reduce it, but is it really going to achieve an increase in housing stock, in a housing shortage? No. What will change that is as time goes on, the economy, you know, we're in another housing bubble right now, and that's going to burst sooner or later, and then the prices are going to go down. I've already seen prices go down in the housing stock, at least in Maricopa County, so we have to be especially cautious, and it's important for you to talk to Mr. Bennett and Mr. Nguyen and Ms. Bliss, and let them know that the negative impacts on the same citizens they're trying to save money on, if you're at 70% on public safety, just do the math. If you take out a certain portion of your revenue, ultimately, it's going to affect all levels of city government, including public safety. I know I get up there and say that, and I've got legislators say, ah, the first thing you do is say you're going to have to cut public safety. Well, the fact of the matter is -- the fact of the matter is, is that you get to a point where you just can't cut anything else. There's just nothing else to cut. And public safety is our most expensive obligation to the citizens of state and the citizens of Prescott, Arizona. So that's something we're going to have to be important. And I think each of you has a responsibility, if I may say that, if not an obligation, to talk to your three legislators and let them know that this would be exceptionally damaging to the city and the services we provide to the citizens that you're trying to give some relief from. So that's an issue that we have to keep our eye on.
Councilman Tenney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be interested—Mark, maybe you could help with that. Barry, that's an excellent philosophy to be able to share, if I can get some figures with that. So as I talk with Representative Bliss, Representative Winn, and Senator Bennett, and say, "Hey, I hear this might be considered in the next legislature," this would be exceptionally damaging to the tune of X. That would be helpful for me.
What is the total percentage of—
Do you have that at your fingertips? I'm going to be even more impressed than I already was.
I already asked them to do this, so I'm sure they've got it.
So it—sales tax on food, as well as residential rentals for the city of Prescott, represents about 17.8% of all of our sales tax. So if that was lost, that'd be $4 million out of the general fund and $4 million out of the streets fund.
Combined or total, or individually?
Each, right. That's important. And as you suggest, there's no way that that could not impact all facets of our budget, including the largest overall section, public safety. Thank you.
If I could get that chart from you. Tyler, could you?
Exactly. And that's my point. If you've got—if you're taking 17% of your revenue out, and only 30% represents—of your total budget represents non-public safety expenditures, is it realistic to think that you could—of that 30%, you could remove 16% of that cost? I sincerely doubt it, because there are certain minimal amenity obligations you have out of that 30% that would prevent you from just, "Okay, well, we'll just cut 16% out of the rest of our budget." Ain't going to work. Now, you may decide as a council that you're going to proportion it. All right, well, if we lose a certain amount, we'll take more out of this one and less out of public safety, but ultimately, you're going to wind up having to cut some modicum of public safety.
Everything.
So that's just one issue, and I thought it was important just to demonstrate to you how important it is that you folks—look, they'll hear from me. At the legislature, I'm not a real person. I'm a paid hired gun, all right? And I will take the position of the city of Prescott down to them and try to convince them why it is not in their constituents' best interest. But when they hear from each of the seven of you and tell them what—and have those numbers, that 16% of our revenue and 70% of our expenses are public safety, do the math, we can afford to do that, and it will not have a positive benefit on housing costs or food costs that is commensurate with the loss of public safety and, at the same time, quality of life, which is, I know, another—a different goal, but it relates to this.
If I may, Mayor—oh, sorry, Steve.
No, go ahead, Clark, please.
Another piece of this philosophically is that I'm a member of the political party that advocates for local control. And unless I missed what you were saying, the people who may be bringing this up in the next legislature are ostensibly part of that same party. So there's a philosophical piece that we could also angle on as well.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Tenney, that is very true. There's a dynamic tension between the legislature and municipalities writ large that makes some of those well-thought local control policies kind of drift out of their minds sometimes. But you are correct. I mean, it's local control. If the public wants to repeal the sales tax on food, they have avenues to do that. They can put pressure on you. They can take it to the ballot. If they think that that really will make a difference, and residential rental, they think that's really going to make a difference, they certainly have avenues to do it, but let us make that decision. Let the people of Prescott, as represented by you, the members of the council, make that decision. There will be other issues that will come up that will affect you. I know one of the things, and it's a separate item, and it has to do with the vacation rentals. Now, I'm happy to say that last year—and Prescott isn't affected by that issue as much as your neighbor Sedona or Scottsdale or, interestingly enough, Page. But we did pass a bill that put some local control back to the cities, and I would suggest to you that Governor Hobbs is more sensitive to that issue than Governor Ducey was. Governor Ducey tended to have believed very strongly in the disruption economy, and that's fine. But he was very supportive of the vacation rental industry and was hesitant to support any major changes that were going to negatively affect that. I would also tell you from a tourism standpoint that when you start, you know, giving advantages to one part of the vacation housing industry, you are going to have a negative impact on the other part of the vacation housing industry. You give benefits to the vacation rentals, you're going to take it away from hotels. So we did pass a bill. It did give you more authority, and I commend you to look at—I don't know if our attorney has looked at that, if you're considering an ordinance, but whether you are or not, I commend that to you, number one. Now, the issue—the before I let him respond, the issue that did not get resolved was what percentage of housing stock can be used for vacation rentals. And even though there was a moratorium that we all agreed to on the issues that we resolved, we all decided we were not going to place a moratorium on the housing stock issue, which is a really tough nut to crack. Mr. Mayor, if I could yield to the city attorney to talk about his plans for how we're going to implement that. And I hope—I apologize if I put you on the spot, but there are some things you can now do you couldn't do before.
Yeah, there is some things that we can do now that we couldn't before. We've looked at that and have some drafts. Also, the Arizona League of City and Towns municipal lawyers have got together and put forth a—
Model.
—model ordinance. And in a lot of ways, we were doing most of what even—maybe beyond what we should have been doing previously, and now that has become legal. But I think there is some things we can do, and that will be brought before council at some point.
And, Mr. Mayor, members, I think that's another one of the items that can be put in the strategies where the manager can work in cooperation with the city attorney's office to come up with those. Now, I know on this one has to do more with sales tax remittance. That has pretty well settled, except for the vacation rentals we don't know about. And, you know, that's a tougher nut to crack. But I will tell you that if you do find pockets of vacation rentals that are not registering with the Department of Revenue and therefore are not paying their fair share of transient lodging taxes, you should notify the city attorney, because that is a violation of code. And it's a violation of state law, more importantly. And, you know, those people, there are punitive sanctions that can go against them for not doing that.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels like some of this vacation rental stuff was tied up into some zoning changes as well. Is that—that the legislature, there was like—was there a mashing up of some sort of ability for municipalities to lose control of their ability to do zoning? Am I getting that right? I see Tyler's kind of nodding, maybe?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam, yes, kind of. You don't have the authority to prohibit vacation rentals in your zoning. That's pretty clear. You do have the authority to prohibit certain commercial activities in a residential zoning area and so on. So there's a little bit of a cloud on that, but I would say at the bottom line is you could not do zoning or board of adjustment-type activities to limit, prohibit, or otherwise restrict vacation rentals, and I would yield to our city attorney.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Our ability previously to restrict vacation rentals was very limited. And at this point, we have a lot more we can do, both in terms of the —looking at the safety of those who would live in it and the compatibility within the neighborhoods. And those are ultimately decisions that council will make, but we have more ability to do that now than we ever had previously.
Maybe not exactly zoning per se. I spent six years on the Glendale Zoning Commission when I lived there, and two years on the Maricopa County Commission. Except for being on a school board for two years, those were the eight-year loneliest years of my life. That is a no-win job. I think we want to—I'm happy to hear that you're working with your colleagues in other cities. I think they're going to figure that stuff out. But you need to be cautious, because if you do something that perhaps skews beyond what your authority may be, you have to be sensitive to the fact that you could be the recipient of a 1487 complaint. The last thing you want to happen is to lose your shared revenues because you tried to rezone a vacation rental. So that's just, you know, one of those gentle words of caution. The next—are we—
You know, I do want to make one comment, and other people think that tax on food is a regressive tax that hits the people who can least afford it the most. But let's keep in mind that those people in that area of the incomes levels are usually eligible for WIC subsidized purchases, and those are not taxed. So it's not across the board.
Very good point, and I thank you for making it. Moving on to shovel-ready infrastructure projects, we kind of talked about that a little bit earlier, when we were talking about flexibility and revenue opportunities and so on. If you've got shovel-ready projects that you can leverage some state assistance or county assistance on, I would always recommend that you prioritize shovel-ready projects ahead of anything else, because that gives you the best opportunity to do it, to demonstrate that you can complete it and complete it. I don't know if there's much more to say about that. Take a leadership role in forming local partnerships to seek infrastructure and other funding. I think what we have done, again, going back to the Dells Park or the Glassford Hill—I think it's more referred to now as Glassford Hill, or—
Yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined. Maybe they'll name it after me when I retire. That's an example of where you have successfully formed a local partnership with the federal government, perhaps the state, that's yet to be determined, Prescott Valley, Prescott and the county. And that's one of those areas where I think we should be doing more of that when we can identify things. And quite frankly, I would just throw out, if there are airport opportunities that would lend themselves—and I remember previous councils had talked about the fact that it might be worthwhile to have Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Yavapai County, and so on, look at cooperative opportunities in funding some of the things that need to be done at the airport to continue its expansion and its viability. And I think the point of this one more was take the leadership role. Prescott should be one coming up and saying, "All right, let's all get together." And I think you've been successful, especially on the Dells Park one, in taking that leadership role. I think there are other areas you can likewise take that leadership role.
Hey, maybe we should call it Aaron's Acres. What do you think?
It's got a nice ring to it, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Any other comments on that? Last strategy in the—I'm sorry, the last strategy in the objective of monitoring the legislatures, continue to establish multi-jurisdictional partnerships to achieve legislative, executive, political subdivision actions. And the one that hits closest to home with me is that you work closely with the League of Cities and Towns on legislative issues. Granted, there are times when, you know, the 800-pound gorilla in Phoenix will seek to dominate those discussions. However, I think you need to be very clear that some of the exigencies that affect communities in the rural parts of the state, Prescott, Yavapai County, Coquettino County, and all the others, sometimes are different than the exigencies that face the city of Phoenix or the city of Tucson. Or for that matter, the city of Scottsdale or Tempe or Gilbert or any of the other suburban or ex-urban cities in Maricopa County. So—but I think that it's really important to keep in touch with those folks, and we venture to do that. Tyler and I work very hard to work with other cities and the counties, County Supervisors Association, the League of Cities and Towns, the Municipal Water Association. I think you're a member of NAWA, aren't you?
AMWA, yeah.
I mean, that's—I represent AMWA, and we always look to SAWA, Southern Arizona Water Users, and NAWA, Northern Arizona Water Users, so that we can get cooperative on water, if I can digress for a second. You know, I keep telling people, water does not recognize geographical boundaries. It kind of goes where it wants to go. And the legal cases are filled since the 19th century with people who had land on opposite sides of a stream, and they decided that the stream would be the border. And lo and behold, the stream changed direction. And instead of it being where it was, it now was, you know, 50 yards, 100 yards, however much. And now the question was, whose land is it? Was it the water, the stream, when it was—the deed was signed, or is it now that—it—so water doesn't recognize geographic boundaries. And that's why it's really important, especially where water is the defining geographical boundary for cities and towns and regions and even some of your zoning and so on. You want to make sure that you continue to establish the best multi-jurisdictional partnerships when you're looking at those things. And it's—you know, water is a critical issue. They did—former Representative Noel—why can I remember his name? Campbell—was very successful in getting more money for some of the adjudication, you know, water adjudication programs at the courts. We worked with the courts. That was helpful. But it was a multi-jurisdictional project to get that done, and I encourage you to continue on those. Anything else on the original goal of maintaining a stable general fund? We talked about a lot of stuff. Let's move on then, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
To goal number two, which is economic development. Is that the next one we want to do? You got it up there? Okay. Goal number two, economic development, providing an environment to enable prosperity and job career creation. And the drivers are tourism, medical government, education, growth, aviation, aerospace, supply chain industries, high tech, and cybersecurity. I think you pretty well cover the landscape with those as drivers of your goal. Anything on the goal that you'd like to modify? The only thing that I have seen in other municipal strategic plans is providing environments to enable prosperity and job career creation. You might also want to talk about capital formation. Yes?
Would you mind? We've—lots of us have been dealing with colds. We're all stuffy.
I apologize.
Time hearing.
I apologize. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Scream a little.
I will—I will try to speak. Usually, that's not a problem with me. Usually, my wife is saying, "Would you talk a little bit lower? You're screaming."
[inaudible].
I will be care—is this better?
Yes.
Is this better? Okay. I'll be more careful to speak right into the microphone. I thank you for saying that. I apologize. You may want to consider, as a driver, that you talk about in addition to—I'm sorry—as your goal, in addition to providing environment to enable prosperity and job and career creation, you might want to consider adding capital formation. And the advantage of that is, is that capital formation gives you other options with regard to—with revenue creation. So if you want to chew about that for a while, I think we would suggest that you add capital formation as one of your definers in goal number two.
Can you describe that a little more broadly?
Capital formation is creating new money in the city. Capital formation is the creation of new investment money. Capital formation is the creation of revenue that is derived from the economic development that has occurred. Capital formation is a traditional term to demonstrate that you want to create more opportunities for actual creation of money and capital for construction, capital for growth, capital for new businesses, and so on, in addition to creating what you have up there—I lost it—job and career creation. Oh, it's up on the top. Oh, it's up on the top. So that's what I would mean by capital formation. I think it's a worthwhile thing to add because I think it demonstrates that you're looking for ways for the city to create new capital opportunities and new money opportunities for the city.
Well, I think overall, over the last couple of years, we've been pretty successful in attracting new investment and new business development. We have this new microhospital that's going down on Robin Drive and 69. Arizona Oncology Group is in the process of building their facility just south of 89A. We obviously are in discussions with Dignity Health on their northern campus. They're getting pretty close to opening up their Dignity Urgent Care on Lee Boulevard. The Center for the Future continues to move forward with trying to develop their projects. The FedEx Distribution Center is open and operating with their first shift and eventually they're planning on going to three shifts 24/7. So we've done a lot of that. Banner Hospital is still planning on developing their site off of Willow Creek Road, although speaking of capital, being able to provide capital for that construction projects being a little more difficult for them. So with these additional businesses locating here and the increase in value of their properties, it really doesn't generate that much benefit for the city because we have virtually no property tax that would be flowing into the city's revenue from these increased values. Most of them go to the county. So that's something that we might want to look at again because even though we're limited in how much property tax increase we can put into the city revenue stream, we haven't taken advantage of any of the increases that we've had available to us over the years. So if we want to generate more capital, we'd have to take a look at that as a potential opportunity to take advantage of these economic projects that we've been pretty successful attracting.
And to that point, I think you've laid it out beautifully why adding capital formation makes a lot of sense. Because remember, with capital formation, you're talking about the value of an asset that increases, that's capital formation, too. So if you had a vacant lot and the lot was acquired by one of the projects that you were talking about, and now the value of that lot, because of the improvements on it, has increased and therefore created capital, it formed more capital. I just think that you can take advantage of that. Quite frankly, by adding capital formation, it loans itself to being able to brag about the successes that you've already had. That's the only point that I would make. I'm not married to it, but I think that it would be worthwhile. I think Mr. Sishka had a comment.
Councilman Sishka, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. I can say, we're always, we're always talking about growth versus no growth versus slow growth. Do capital opportunities have anything to do with prospective growth or no growth? Let me put it the other way. Does growth or no growth have any impact on capital opportunities? I think the answer there is clearly yes. If a community decides that it wants to engage in slow growth, that will have an impact on the types of investments that will be brought to that community. If a community decides they want no growth, and there are communities, you know, and I've heard those comments here in Prescott, there's no, you know, we're not going to scaddle around the side of that issue. That's obviously something that people have said. We love Prescott the way it is. Let's stay the way we are, kind of thing. That's going to have an impact on the type of investment that you're going to get. On the other hand, sometimes there are investments that will generate benefit even in a slow growth environment because it will provide the kind of minimal amenities of life that are important to the people who already live in that community without necessarily expanding the community in and of itself. Does that make, does that answer your question? I mean, all of the healthcare opportunities there, that benefits everybody in the city without necessarily auguring for growth in the city. Now, it does add employees, except you could argue that those employees were already living here and now they just have found a place to work and so on and so forth. But I think the question you asked is valid. The other question that I think is right alongside of that is, does no growth, slow growth, or high-growth policies affect capital formation? Clearly, it does. Thank you. So if there's no objection, we'll filter in the term capital formation in the economic development goal. We'll slot it in grammatically where it belongs. Consult my Funk and Wagner's dictionary and see where it belongs. All right, let's look at the objectives. And the first one is take better advantage of community assets. And the strategies we talked about, and again, things that the staff will have to do, and Councilwoman can tell me, am I doing better on volume? Okay, good.
How to read lips.
All right, very good. Maximize opportunities for private sector businesses, especially the visitor industry. I think we all support tourism. It's one of the most vital aspects. I don't know that there's any need to discuss that. Maximize economic opportunities at existing city-owned operated locations, the airport, golf course, et cetera, by seeking reasonable and appropriate rates for leases, services, and enforcement of collection of delinquencies. That's one of those, it's not saying we should do more, it's saying we should do better, I think. Comments, questions? Third one up there is explore strategies with academic and trade institutions to build future workforce capabilities. I think you already do your partnership with Yavapai Community College and you do your partnership with Embry-Riddle. And I think that there have been opportunities in both those places to expand the relationship. And I think that continuing to explore those strategies makes sense. That strategy probably remains untouched. You look like you're going to ask me a question. You've got that, you've got that Steve Sishka curiosity look on your face.
You know, Barry, my question is, we just started a mayor's standing committee on workforce housing. And I'm looking at all this stuff up here and I'm going, this is all well and good, but if we don't have a place for these people to live, then we're, we're kind of rowing up upstream. And I was wondering about your thoughts on that.
Certainly, availability of housing stock is important and it is, it is a connected issue and a separate issue all on its own. And that is something that you might want to refer to the staff to actually look at those opportunities, that they can report back to that committee, to look at options for improving, increasing, or expanding the existing housing stock. You know, in Phoenix, it seems like every week I see a new apartment complex that's just been airlifted down. Right next to my office, I mean, there was a vacant lot, big vacant lot, big vacant lot. And the next thing I knew, there was an apartment complex next to it. And it's an affordable housing complex. But remember that the system works where the developer puts in a property and then sells the property when it's done to whoever is going to own and manage it. And they're the ones that are going to make the ultimate decision of the cost allocation on that and therefore the rents. So you've got to take all those things into consideration. But I think it's certainly a viable committee you have, and I think I would encourage staff to look at those opportunities that can contribute to the work that that staff is doing, that the committee is doing.
Mayor, can I just really quickly, I'm sorry?
Did I do it again?
I just want to clarify because I have a feeling the question will come up because of the way that you just worded that statement, Councilman Sishka. It's not a mayor's commission or committee.
I'm sorry.
It's a standing committee.
It's a standing committee, okay.
That was adopted by resolution by the whole of council. So I just want to clarify that.
I stand corrected.
Like I said, that standing committee would want to look at that. Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah. Appreciate it. Going on, and the next one is encourage business industry partnerships with K-12 community, local colleges, universities to encourage innovation, student retention for employment, including the support of the Center for the Future. That's another strategy that probably is ongoing and goes without saying. You know, we, you have, you have some people in K-12 who are leaders in the education community, County School Superintendent, Tim Carter, has been a member of the County School Superintendent Association, which happens to be my client, and, you know, he's a real, he's a real leader when it comes to looking at things that the educational service centers provide. And I think that that is certainly something where you're, have an opportunity to take better advantage of a community asset. And I think you're already doing it, but I think that probably speaks for itself. The last one is ensure aviation, aerospace, defense, and high-tech companies new and continued presence in Prescott as well as the associated supply chain. That's a big one. And that is one of those where you have tremendous opportunity with the regional airport. And I think we've seen that there are companies that are interested between the regional airport and the education opportunity at an Embry-Riddle or even a Yavapai Community College, there's a real partnership opportunity there. And I think by doing that, you probably worked very hard on achieving that strategy, so. Others? All right, let's move on to objective number two, which is utilize established regional commonalities to support necessary sewer water and other transportation, infrastructure growth and development. We are a, what's the term, a water, not attainment, water?
Importer.
Designated water provider.
Assured water provider. You have to look at state laws that you want to protect to maximize that. We currently have a 100-year assured water supply requirement before development can commence. That's a good thing. We also have some laws that exempt out developments of six houses or under, which, if you're familiar with it, has caused a tremendous crisis with reover any development north of Scottsdale. Because those people came in without 100-year water supply. Scottsdale's been temporarily providing it water. But remember, when a city supplies water to an area outside the city boundaries, that affects their water, their water allocations. And you can't afford to be given too much away outside of what you're responsible for. And EPCOR has a request into the Corporation Commission to maybe serve that area, but in the interim, a potential crisis is occurring. Let me give you a definition of crisis because I think it's really important to understand that level. When I was working for Mountain Bell Telephone when divestiture occurred in 1982, and there was still a division of long-distance and local service, some of you will remember that. And I remember we went back to Washington, DC, and I was in Mo Yudal's office, and my boss and I were there and telling him, there's a telecommunications crisis, there's a telecommunications. We were required to say that three times fast in every meeting, telecommunications, telecommunications. And we wanted Mo Yudal to read an editorial that had been in the Wall Street Journal into the record. And Mo Yudal looked at us and he said, look, he said, I'll read that editorial and it's very good and I think it makes good points. He said, but let me explain to you what a crisis is in telecommunications. A telecommunications crisis is when you pick up the phone, remembering back to wireline, and there's no dial tone. That's a crisis. Water crisis, when you turn on the faucet, nothing comes out. Then it's a crisis. Do we have a shortage right now? Absolutely. No question about it. Are we in a multi-decade drought? For sure we are. There's no question about it. Does the public see it as a crisis? Not yet. And that's because water continues to flow. Now, you will be surprised to hear that the total amount of water that's used by Maricopa County area cities, which is, receives CFP water, which is 50% of the population of the state, is only 11%. And yet, you know, they're, we're always told, oh, you guys are using all the water. If they're in Prescott cities, people are using all the water. No, they're not. There are other interest groups that are very important using water. So we have to be careful.
Agriculture.
This, say again?
Agriculture.
Agriculture is 74% of the water in the state.
Right.
One of the purposes of WIFA, by the way, was to help agriculture use water more effectively. Senator Fan, when she was working on the Water Authority, which turned into the Enhanced WIFA, said, you know, there are farmers who use, who use right now flood irrigation. That's a big waste of water. But they would like to use drip irrigation, but they don't have the money to put it in the system. WIFA is a type of program that can provide them low-interest, no-interest, or forgivable loans that will enable them to do that. That's where you're going to start saving water. There are other conservation measures. My point in saying this is with regard to the infrastructure, sewer, water, transportation, infrastructure, especially water, that we have to be very cautious to be engaged with our legislators, to remind them that there are certain things that may sound kind of neat when they're proposed, like reducing the 100-year assured water to 50 years or 40 years, but that would put undue pressure on things and is not necessarily in the best interest of the citizens. So again, I'm encouraging you to talk to your legislators about issues like that, especially when it comes to regional commonalities. You know, the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Yavapai County, all have the same interests when it comes to, to infrastructure, especially water. Feel comfortable with the progress we're making so far?
Sure.
Very good. Then number three on our list of objectives is continue to monitor moderate, healthy, and sustainable rate of growth to act as a renewal of the city and to support the local economy. And I'd kind of throw that in your lap, and it's something that Councilman Sishka, I think, was alluding to in his question of me before in terms of the impact of no growth, low growth, and regular growth. So I would throw it back to you for comment as to whether we need to change any of the language on that particular objective. And by the way, make no change is an option. I don't want you to think that you feel obligated to make a change. Let me tell you what the, I'm sorry?
Oh, I would like to make a comment on number three. Continue to monitor, I'd like to add, and establish a moderate, healthy, and sustainable rate of growth and include, to act as a renewal of the city is, sounds okay, but maybe a better way to say it would be a sustainable rate of growth in order to promote and maintain the quality of life for the city and to support the local economy. Throw in a quality of life. And monitor and establish a moderate, healthy, and sustainable growth, rate of growth. I don't know how you feel about that.
Monitor is an observation term. Establish is an action term. So you are changing this objective to we want moderate growth as opposed to we want to continue to observe a moderate, healthy, and sustainable rate of growth. So one is an action term. I'm not, I'm not advocating either way, but I think you need to, you need to chew on that a little bit. And I throw it back to you to chew on.
Yeah, I mean, there's various components that contribute to that. So whether we're looking at supply and demand for multifamily housing, that is a component of workforce housing or sustainable housing. So hourly workers have a place to live and contribute to the economy when new developments come in and need workers. So how do we manage that and at what level? I think any basic understanding of supply and demand is starting to have an effect in the city. We're seeing more projects, bigger projects for various multifamily developments that I think is a consequence of the high demand for those. We had a historically high demand for a single-family homes, but that's starting to moderate because of interest rates and supply chain and component costs as well. So when we are doing a pretty laudable job of attracting economic development So when we are doing a pretty laudable job of attracting economic development and all the projects that I listed, almost all of them are going to need additional workers, whether they're skilled workers or hourly workers. And all those people need a place to live. And either they're going to commute, that impacts our transportation and quality of life, or we support having developments within the city so that there's less commuting and less impact on traffic. So you've got all these components that contribute in some way or another, and it's up to us to try to find a balance for all of those.
They're debating who's going to go first. You're next, you, Mayor.
Who's next?
Okay.
Councilman Tenney.
Mayor, I appreciate what you said. It's important that we be pragmatic about who's going to service all these things that we want for our quality of life. And there's really two choices. They can live among us, or they can live outside and commute among us. And some people don't want any of those things somehow, and yet they want somebody to come to their table when they go to the restaurant, to be taking their blood pressure when they need to go to the hospital, et cetera. So I appreciate that there's folks who dig into those issues a little deeper than what I feel like I want this morning and what's practical and pragmatic. So I appreciate those comments a lot. I, the wording of number three, we're talking about that a little bit. It's certainly as good as it is establishing what would be a healthy, what we seven feel is a healthy, moderate, and sustainable rate of growth. That's fraught, I think. You're not wrong about that. That would be difficult to make that into an action item, to say, okay, 10% of this, or 8% of that, or 4% of that, or so many people a year, is difficult. It's an interesting idea, but I think we're going to get in the weeds for quite some time if we really try to establish a sustainable rate of growth, according to each of our opinions.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just echo what Councilman Tenney said there. I think establishing is something that, I guess, in the guise of a strategic plan, I think monitoring makes sense. Establishing is, happens on a day-to-day basis up here when we have discussions about preliminary and final plots and water budgets and things of that nature. So I appreciate where Councilmember Rusing's coming from, but I think the nature of this document is such to give us guidance that kind of lays it out as opposed to directing it too much so. Because I think there are times when, as the mayor alluded to, you know, if the market is demanding a different type of development in our community, then we need to be responsive to that. So I appreciate Councilman Tenney's remarks.
If I can draw your attention to the strategy that we developed under that, because I think it's important. It was to establish, in your view, quantitative data regarding growth, and that was how you monitor moderate, healthy, and sustainable rate of growth. So the monitor was the action item, and I don't have a position on this, folks, but when you say establish, now you're going to ask the staff now to make a determination of, you've got to put some numbers in there. What is a moderate, you know, what are we going to do to establish a moderate, healthy, and sustainable rate of growth? And then you get into numerics, which is doable. I'm not saying it's not, but that's why I think what Councilmember Tenney and Councilmember Montoya said was, you know, we might be pushing the envelope a little bit too much by putting a word "establish" in because that's an action item. It's going to require us to make some decisions on that that may not work for the population at large. Just a thought. However, on the other hand, to Councilmember Rusing, got to remember to stay close to the mic, thought about putting in here, act as renewal of the city, support the local economy, and a, I don't remember how you said it, but a viable quality of life or something. That's certainly appropriate to add as an objective in this language. So could you repeat the quality of life where it belonged and, in your view, Councilmember Rusing?
And sustainable rate of growth in order to promote and maintain the quality of life for the city and to support the local economy.
Did you get that, Tyler? Okay. That certainly is a viable addition. It's not an action item, but it's a viable addition. Thank you for that recommendation. All right, anything else on that? All right, you've gotten a lot done. Last time we touched on the airport, I'm not sure we need to revisit that. We already had some things that will enable staff.
Airport manager might have had a couple of things she might have...
Yes, I'd be more than happy to yield.
Hi, it's Robin Sabata, Airport Director. And under the airport one, actually, we've been making progress toward many of the objectives and the strategies that have been listed up there. One of the things is in bullet point, I'm sorry, item one, bullet point one, the neighboring jurisdiction element of the compatible zoning means that we should probably be pushing beyond our boundaries and into IGAs with other communities. So if we'd want to specify, that's sort of the direction we'd be going, is moving toward IGAs for the protection and compatibility. The second item would be perhaps under item number two, the regional commodities. We were thinking, commonalities, I'm sorry. In that particular situation, we have had a discussion about having a commercial corridor study along 89 and 89A to help identify possibilities for commercial and industrial growth that would also be compatible for the airport environment. I do believe this was part of the North Prescott Study, Michael, was a recommendation that we do explore this commercial corridor study so that we do identify areas for commercial potential and preserve some of those areas, so that even if a residential does come in, that we have those commercial blocks available. The third item would be actually along the, it would be the, if I could go up to item number one again, it'd be one, strategy bullet point three, where we talk about bolster industry and business growth. We should really be looking at opportunities for the W parcel near the airport and how that can be better evaluated for its capability, whether it's for what type of growth that we're looking for and what would be a plan of action to utilize that acreage in a manner that would be economically beneficial for the city as well as compatible for the airport. So we would recommend, I would recommend something along those lines.
Can I interject something?
Sure.
Just as a point of process, the project that Robin was just talking about would likely become a tactic under strategy that was the bolster industry and business growth. So as the, as a staff constructs the strategies and tactics, we usually don't put up there because those are really, you know, how are you going to do it today? What are we going to do today to do it? But that's clearly a tactic and would fit very perfectly there.
That's great. Thank you for the comment. We do want to point out on item number three, we have currently $17.9 million in active state and federal grants. I know earlier, Mayor Protam Montoya, you had indicated that some other opportunities could be pursued, and those have been discussed at the state level. Potentially up to $2 million a year is available at the state level, and so we will be actively pursuing some of those strategies. And then I think those are sort of the higher-level items that we wanted to cover, and I think that's about good. Okay?
And as I said, and Tyler was typing so fast, there were vapor trails coming off his fingers, that we'll incorporate those, Robin, as tactics under strategies, and that's part of what the staff will be doing after we finish here today. Any other comments about that? If it's all right with the council, then I think we've concluded the conversations, unless there's some additional... Yes? Mayor, I think councilmember can tell me. Has a...
Was it me?
Yes, Councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you.
CW.
CW. You know, one of the things I'm taking away from many, many of these is the need for data. And I know we've talked about that. You know, I think probably, if anything, the city of Prescott needs to become more, maybe more proactive in data. And my question to you is hypothetically, let's say if we had the data on how many cars, you know, pass down 69 every day, would that help us in our request on a state level for more funds if we had actual data on all of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman can tell me unquestionably. The thing that people like me, when I go before a legislative committee or sit down and can say, you know, here's the data, here's the actual hard data that supports the contention that we need additional state funding for that state road or county road or whatever it is, because we have X number of cars there this week and last week, we had less, and the week before, we had, no question about it. And I think that's one of the tactics under some of these strategies that I believe staff can include in that, maybe Mike can add that.
Yeah, to councilwoman can tell me, did I get that out right?
CW, work.
CW. This specific data point that you just raised, we have, but I think it raises a larger issue, which is that we need to have data that is useful and that we promote the data that's useful and share it with people. We do a lot of data collection that I think we feel like has value, but the value's kind of minimal. There's better ways to capture information to paint a picture, and I think that gets to what you're talking about.
Well, as we have spoken before on other issues, it's, I think the data helps us create the need. And I know, you know, in all the years I've worked, that's been part of my strategy, was creating and substantiating the need with real facts. And I, you know, I think as we're asking and requesting for this money in all the different areas that we'd like to have it, I think having all that data is going to be extremely important. But thanks for backing that up. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman can tell me. I can't begin to tell you how important having viable, actual factual data is in making our case. The mayor and I last spring were trying to get, put ourselves in a position to be able to request funding from the state for the park, but we couldn't get, we didn't have the estimate yet. And it was difficult for me, oh, how much do you need? I don't know, 5 million, 6 million, 10 million, you know, how much you got? I mean, you know, and I think that the more of that we have and the more data development we can put as a tactic under the strategies, I think the better equipped we're going to be to make our case. So I appreciate your comment very much, very much.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Very, when we discussed the airport at our previous meeting, I forgot to bring up the question of using the word "public safety" in our airport discussion. And, you know, we need to not only protect the airport from encroachment, and the reason why we need to do that is for enhanced public safety. So under the objectives, number one, I would just like to throw out, strike, protect, and start off with enhance public safety and efficiency by protecting the airport from encroachment by non-compatible development that would impede its airspace and compromise public safety. Because I think that's the whole objective. We've had the last six months, we've been discussing our AVO, our Airport Vicinity Overlay District, and the message of public safety has been lost. We don't have any codes that protect the public from building schools, churches, and residential areas in the crash zone. So that's one of the purposes of this AVO, and I think we just need to get the message out that we need to protect the public and use the term "public safety."
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rusing, I don't disagree with what you said. I would draw your attention to objective five, which is support airport safety. And I'm wondering if perhaps the language that you talked about might not better be placed in that objective.
Okay, good point.
And I think that we can, if you've got it written down and can share it with Tyler, I think what we can do is go back and craft it in such a way that it captures it. I think it's a great point, and I think it's a good enhancement of the public safety concept. So I think we can probably surgically get it into objective number five, which specifically is support airport safety.
Thank you for your guidance.
Thank you. Any other comments on the goals and objectives in the strategic plan? Then we are, I'm sorry?
I would kind of add on to Councilwoman Rusing's comments. When we're talking about sustainable or measured growth, we can't separate the public safety component of that. You know, as we continue to add residential units, whether they're multifamily or single-family in various areas of the community, they impact their ability of providing sufficient and equivalent response times for both police and fire and emergency medical response. So, you know, we're going to be looking later on during the voting session about approving some additional projects and providing water for them. But most of our growth has been in North Prescott. Now we have some projects that are being developed within the city limits, but nevertheless, they will impact our ability to respond in an appropriate and timely manner to emergency situations. So we have to be able to tie the ability to grow our public safety sector, not only staffing, but equipment, and even brick-and-mortar additional fire stations, to make sure that we can keep up with the growing number of units by being able to provide equivalent public safety response for those new residents. So those have to be considered together, because otherwise you can grow more and more residential units, but not being able to respond timely to an emergency situation. You know, I would argue that public safety is probably the primary reason to have a government, to make people be safe and be able to protect their lives and property, and providing public safety personnel to do that. So we need equipment, we need locations, and we need staff. And we're being challenged in all those areas.
Thank you, Mayor. I would suggest that the staff will take that and slot it in in the appropriate strategy areas with language that will reflect that. And I'd point to Life, Liberty, and the Pursuit of Happiness, which was originated by?
Thomas Jefferson, based upon the...
Wrong. Adam Smith, yeah.
To John Locke.
Well, Adam Smith, who wrote that the business is life, liberty, and the business of life is the acquisition of property.
That's what John Locke was said, and that's what a lot of our founding fathers wanted to make sure that they controlled their own property, not the control of the crown.
That's correct.
But when Thomas Jefferson wrote those words, he felt if he put in the pursuit of happiness, he'd get a lot more support from the public at large.
And he tested it with polling on both CNN and Fox. I don't think the Declaration of Independence, but by the way, there are other parts of the Declaration, I've studied it, and I don't know how many of you are familiar, this is your education moment, okay? How many of you have studied it? But there was a movement called the Scottish Enlightenment, and that is where he picked up the, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. And that was, Thomas Reed originally said that. And the brilliance of Jefferson was that he was able to weave all these great ideas. He was... I was at the Library of Congress on December 3rd, and we got to go into the Jefferson Library, which he had in his home. And unfortunately, a lot of the books were destroyed in a fire, but there's still a lot. It was just remarkable to me, the books that were tagged in green, that were books that actually were in his personal library. It was just a great moment to just sit there and look at books that he had thumbed through, and that was pretty remarkable. So appreciate that. We will weave those comments in as parts of the strategies. In some cases, they're tactics when we're looking at specific things. Response times, obviously something that is a tactic that goes to a strategy of making sure that we provide the necessary response times for public health and safety, that's for sure. With the permission of the council, I'd like to move to the legislative agenda.
Certainly.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah, I think it's agendized in our voting meetings.
Since the strategic plan... Since the strategic plan talks about protecting legislation, can I just talk about one or two of these? Michael, is that okay?
I don't have any problem with it if the council's comfortable with it.
All right.
As part of the strategic plan, I think it fits in to what we're discussing now.
Unless anybody objects?
The Italian budget might object, let's say.
Obviously, it makes me a little nervous to kind of move on to the next item essentially. But the strategic plan is broad.
Yeah.
To the extent that this is part of the strategic plan, so be it. But I don't think we can...
I'm not asking for any decisions. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. And I would note that, can't find it now, but where it says that we're required to monitor legislation to do it, and within the context of that, to help the staff develop its strategies and tactics. I just wanted to make a comment about one of the things in here, and that is, in the document where it talks about the Tourism Marketing Authority, which Prescott very strongly supported two years ago when it was before the legislature and almost got passed, but it's still an idea. We have not decided in the industry, our representative, Phoenix Convention of Visitors Bureau, whether to pursue this. I appreciate you're keeping it in here. I'm actually meeting with Chairman Wilmuth of the House Commerce Committee and Chairman Kaiser of the Senate Commerce Committee separately tomorrow, and one of the things I'm going to ask him is, is whether they believe that it is appropriate to move on it. But even if we don't move on it this year, I, I want to encourage you to maintain it in there because I think there will come a time, very shortly, when we will be able to provide a Tourism Marketing Authority-type style that will enable your Office of Tourism in the City of Prescott to have greater funding at no expense to the citizens. Remember, 71 percent of all the hotel rooms in the state are occupied by out-of-state residents, so you are exporting a fee, and it's not a tax. So that was the advantage. And that's the only thing I wanted to say, was that when we're watching legislation, that it's something that we need to be observing very, very carefully. We're finished about 23 minutes early, which attests to your efficiency as a council.
We appreciate those accolades.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Michael and Tyler. We get on conference calls, and Tyler and I exchange emails and so on. You have a terrific staff, at least today, and I will, I appreciate it, and I, again, would compliment Tyler during the session. He's an invaluable asset to me when we're trying to figure out how to pursue things down at the legislature that's in the city's best interest. So thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you, Mr. Ernst. Thank you for facilitating these strategic meetings, and we'll look forward to your help with our budget when we get to that point.
Mr. Mayor, always happy to help you in whatever way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
All right. I think this study session is adjourned.